Welcome to the Village of Madison's virtual town hall meeting. Well, this is different, a different type of town hall meeting. It is extremely important that we provide to the community all the information that we have. The Village of Madison tonight will be talking about some of our highlights. And I am proud of everything that has happened with our board. I want to thank our board. I want to thank staff for all that you're doing and providing this information tonight. Growth and progress are, are ahead of us in the village itself, and we look forward to it. So without further ado, I still wanted to tell people too, a little bit more about tomorrow morning at 10:30, our own Congresswoman Robin Kelly will be out here to talk about some of what is going to assist the village itself and surrounding communities with extra help. And we're looking forward to that. We know that we have so much to talk about tonight, so I'm not going to alone a welcome, but I want to talk about a little bit of, we have five active projects going on in the midst of a pandemic. And I know that Laverne and others are going to talk about all that we're doing right now. So I want to thank the community for their patience. I want to tell you that I am so, so proud of each and every one of you for what you're doing and in the midst of this pandemic, how you're staying safe. And I look forward to when we can all meet together again and we can meet in person. So continue to do what you're doing and we will, we will meet real soon and have concerts and be there to, to touch and, and look and, and be a part of a community in a village as we have in the past. So without further ado, I'm going to turn it over to the village administrator, Mr. Anthony Burton. So Mr. Anthony Burton, if you would go about doing the introduction, thank you.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you everyone who's here for our virtual town hall meeting. And we have a lot of exciting information to share tonight. This is going to be a great evening of information shared by all of our department heads. In the midst of, as the president mentioned, a pandemic, we've done a great job of getting through it. But I will tell you, you know, there are some people who deserve special thanks for us for getting through this period that was very tough in 2020. Of course, the Madam President, you and the Board of Trustees, I want to definitely thank you for helping us get through this, this tough 2020 year and all the things that we've done despite the pandemic. You all have stayed definitely in the forefront of, of the South suburban communities, and you are definitely leading the charge to ensure that we have a bright future. So thank you for that, Madam President and Board of Trustees and, and Madam Clerk. I don't see her online, but definitely Madam Clerk. Also, in the midst of that, you know, our first responders, they kept us, they got us through this pandemic. I really want to thank our first responders and our medical and health field. We got through it because of all the hard work that you all did. So definitely our first responders, our medical health field, and then staff. You know, again, as we get ready to talk about the stuff that we're doing right now, I also want to thank you for getting us through 2020. So all of us together have made it, made it possible to get to this point. So thank everyone together's getting us to this point. So without holding us up, we have had a chance to bring on some great people, but we couldn't do without our human resource department. So I have Mr. Dwayne Howard here to talk about what's going on with our human resource department. Ms. Dwayne Howard.
My name is Dwayne Howard, and I'm in Human Resources. I joined the village in July of 2019, and I've been a resident of Madison for the past 22 years. So I'm very excited about being here. We've had a lot of successes in the midst of COVID, and you know, we will have continued successes as we go forward, and you'll hear a lot about that. But a part of my job is the recruiting and making sure that we hire the right people to fulfill our needs and build a team that's going to help us sustain ourselves through all of the growth that we've been through and what we will continue to do. So in spite of COVID, we were able to bring on some really great talent that's going to help us get, to go further beyond with all of the successes we have. And what I'd like to do, a couple of them you will hear from tonight, but I'd like to just give you a brief bio of four individuals that we recently brought on to the village, which I believe will be very good for us as we move forward. The first is Rama Ram, and she joined the village in October of 2019 as a planner in the Economic Development Department. Rama holds a master's degree in urban and regional planning from Virginia Tech and is an undergraduate degree in architecture. Most recently, she was a planner with Ginkgo Planning and Design. Then we brought on Rashid Jones. He joined the village in August of 2020 as our Director of Finance and Budget Officer. Rashid has a bachelor's degree from the University of St. Francis and is a certified public accountant licensed in the state of Illinois. Prior to joining the village, Rashid was the Finance Director for the city of Berwyn, Illinois, and most recently, the Assistant Finance Director for the Village of Schaumburg. So some really relevant experience. Then Ernest Roberts joined the village in August of 2020 as our Director of Community Development. Ernest holds a bachelor's degree from Northwestern University and is licensed, and is a licensed professional engineer in the states of Illinois, Indiana, and Ohio. And he's also certified as a project management professional. So prior to joining the village, Ernest served in a number of engineering and project manager roles with Robinson Engineering. And then finally, Zatania McCoy joined the village in August of 2020 as the Deputy Director of Community Development. Zatania holds a bachelor's degree from Mount Olive College and is a licensed real estate broker and certified aging in place specialist. Most recently, Zatania was the Director of Community and Economic Development for the, for the Village of Sauk Village. So we've brought on some really top talent. We're very excited about having them join the team. They have fit in very nicely with the family, and we will continue as we move forward and grow and, and have successes with the village to make sure that we have the talent that's going to help take us to the next level. So thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Dwayne, and all the work that you're doing with the Human Resource Department. Just so everyone knows also, Dwayne also comes to us recently, as he mentioned in 2019. Most likely, you know, as a resident, but also, you know, Dwayne spent some time at, at the city colleges and also with Dominic's Food for many years as their HR Director. So we are really excited to have Dwayne with us also. So just want to make sure I, I point that out. The next person we have that will come to speak to us tonight will be our Fire Chief. Chief Schwab will give us some updates on what's happening in the Fire Department. And Chris, again, you know, I want to thank you again for the work that our Fire Department did during this pandemic. Fire Chief Schwab.
Thank you Administrator Burton, and welcome to all of the neighbors out there. I'm Fire Chief Schwab, and I've lived in and served the Village of Madison for 26 years, of which the last six and a half as the Fire Chief. A little history of the department, we were organized in 1894, which means we're serving in our 127th year to the village. And we're volunteer all the way up until the early 70s, at which time they converted to a full-time staff since the village had growth and needed a full-time fire department. We currently have two fire stations, one on Central and 30, and the other one at Deppertan and 30, right next to the metro station. I want to talk a little bit about 2020, and I speak about the challenges, not that there's difficulties and challenges, but I speak to challenges as opportunities that with a little leadership and effort, we demonstrate resiliency and a commitment to the delivery of the high, at the highest level of service that all of our residents deserve. So three areas of challenges in 2020 was, of course, staffing, departmental apparatus, and of course, the big one, COVID. Staffing, we had several retirements and some career-ending injuries in 2020 that resulted in some vacancies. And anytime we have vacancies, that creates overtime. So it's imperative that we work to fill those positions as quickly as possible. I'd like to thank our HR Director and his assistant, Mr. Dwayne Howard, and his assistant Jen, and the Fire and Police Commission for managing to provide the department with highly qualified candidates during this difficult time. We were able to fill four firefighter positions, one lieutenant position, and a deputy chief position. And these positions are highly critical to the success of our department. And of course, it goes without saying that during this time of COVID, to interview candidates, to provide background checks and things like that are just super difficult during this, this moment in time. So thanks to them for sure. The second area of challenge is the department apparatus. We saw one ambulance and one fire engine reach their end of life, and we're causing more maintenance issues than being in service. So through the efforts of our maintenance division and our Deputy Chief Bacon, the best deal was struck for replacements for both. So I want to thank the village president, the finance committee, the Board of Trustees, and Administrator Burton that provided the leadership to authorize these purchases. And I'm happy to say that we have a new ambulance that went into service in November, and we should see a new fire engine that will be delivered next month. Just as a point of reference, these things take about 14 or 15 months to build. So it's something we have to think about ahead of time so that we can replace it, so we can maintain the level of service to our village residents. Now, both these apparatus should serve the village for many years to come. Now, the third challenge, of course, is COVID. And as you can imagine, 2020 was fraught with challenges for anyone who delivers emergency medical service. Fortunately, we have guidance from IDPH and our Medical Director, Dr. Heilich, sir, out of University of Chicago Health, who set protocols for the safety of our responders and those they transport. With further guidance from the CDC and the Illinois Fire Chiefs Association and the Associated Firefighters of Illinois, protocols were set up within the stations to provide a safe working environment for the firefighters. And while all these precautions are great, as we know, the precautions minimize risk, but do not eliminate it. So as such, we did have 12 firefighters that at different times throughout the year had to be quarantined for positive tests that they were exposed to COVID. I'm happy to say they all quarantined, and there was no residual effects, and they all made it back to work, and we are now currently at full staff. So I want to express appreciation to the community as our area, far and away, was one of the most compliant in terms of mask-wearing, social distancing, and our businesses were fantastic, setting up protocols to keep our residents safe. And I also want to express appreciation for the resident, many residents and businesses who donated PPE to our department and offered prayers and well wishes to all of our firefighters. Real quickly, I did want to do some numbers that we ran over 4,300 calls in 2020, which was up 4% from 2019. An average response from when someone dials 911 till someone's at their door was five minutes and six seconds, which is excellent. And more statistics will be published on the village website once we get them all compiled and in a format that will make sense on the website. The last thing I'd like to say is I would encourage everyone to get their vaccinations as they become available. It is frustrating now as the demand exceeds the supply, and it's understandable that people can be very irritated. But more and more things are popping up. There's pop-up vaccinations everywhere that are starting to happen. And by the end of the next month or two, there should be much more supply in the area where everybody who wishes to can get vaccinated, and I would encourage that at the highest level. So I'd like to thank everybody, thank Madam President, the Board, Administrator Burton, for allowing me to have a little of your time. And again, if anybody has any questions, you can always call my office, and we can have that further discussion. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief Schwab, for all the information, and I'm sure the public will, can take that information. This information, as, as Chief Schwab mentioned, will be posted, and some of the information we posted on our website so that the public can see what we're talking about tonight. So the next person we have up tonight, we've been working very hard on our comprehensive plan and things that can help move our village forward. As you can tell, he's a planner, who's plans everything out. So Mr. Ernest Roberts is here to discuss what's going on in community development. Mr. Ernest Roberts.
Thank you, Ms. Burton. Good evening, Madam President, Village Board of Trustees, staff, and residents of the Village of Madison. My name is Ernest Roberts III. I'm the Director of Community Development, and I just wanted to share with you some of the background information about our department, as well as some highlights and achievements from the previous year. Since coming on board, we've increased our staff to a whole of people. Basically, three code enforcement officers, one building inspector, an administrative staff, and a deputy director that is over code enforcement. We've been updating our building codes to the current 2018 codes. And basically, we have several different divisions in our department. Community Development in general is responsible for building permits, construction inspection, property maintenance enforcement, structural plan reviews, zoning administration and enforcement, as well as long-range structure planning and engineering-related plans. Our motto is to operate in excellence and to provide the best public service with integrity, fairness, and compassion. Our Building Service Department administers the codes and ordinances that relates to the property management and completes inspections for both commercial and residential properties upon change of owners, ownership, use, and tendency, as well as inspections of multi-use buildings containing four or more dwelling units and regular exterior property maintenance. Our Code Enforcement Division also ensures that properties and residential and commercial properties are up to standard and meet the code as far as what we have established as far as our standards within the village. Some of the items addressed are garbage, refuse storage, tall grass and weeds, deteriorated houses, and non-operable vehicles. The Division also can be existing structural survey inspection aside for both commercial or residential properties upon change of use owner in tendency. These inspections are done in conjunction with the Madison Fire Department and inform buyer at least of any code violations or repairs that necessary to bring the codes up, to bring the properties up to code. Once complete, the certificate of occupancy and building permits are issued for any remodeling or additions that the new owner or tenant is applied for. In the previous year, as Administrator Burton has already stated, the year 2020 has been very challenging, unprecedented even. However, during that time, we were still able to complete 589 existing structural inspections. We were also able to complete another additional 1,244 total permits that were executed, which consisted of 1,084 residential additions or remodelings, 90 garage, commercial, building remodeling and signs, and 70 electrical permits for a total construction cost of over $227 million. This was the third highest number of permits since 2001, which was very surprising. So that just goes to show that even during a pandemic, we still were moving forward. Lastly, the department is also headed up facilitation of an updated and long overdue comprehensive plan that captures all of the previous development and previous plans that were developed into one complete document that covers everything from land use, demographics, economic development, transportation, and implementation of these goals in form of opportunities. The document would help focus initiatives for the village for the next 10 to 15 years. In addition to the comprehensive plan, the village has also executed a long-term payment management plan that will evaluate all 75 lane mouths of village-owned roadways, as well as provide a condition rating system or CRS that will provide real-time roadway conditions along with approximate budgets for repairs. All roadway repairs should be completed within 10 to 15 years, depending on available funding. This will put all the roadway systems on a rotational basis and will provide real-time data for repairs. So we're very, very happy to have that done. And again, all of these items were very long overdue. Again, we look forward to continuing to be innovative and making the community development on the cutting edge of serving the residents of the Village of Madison. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Roberts. And then let me just say that, you know, you're right, that comprehensive plan was great. And I'm happy on behalf of the Board and the Board of Trustees that we have the opportunity to pass that into action on Monday night. So thank you for all the hard work on that comprehensive plan and getting it done. So great to have you part of what we're doing here in the village also. Next person we have up is our Public Works Director, Mr. Gordon Harden. And he also has a guest here who will talk about our water sampling. Mr. Gordon Harden.
Thank you, Mr. Burton. Good evening, Madam President, those trustees and Madison residents. I'm pleased to be here this evening to give you a brief overview of our Public Works Department's current projects and projected projects we will be undertaking this year. We are currently nearing the completion of our sanitary and water main line installation. This line runs northbound on Ridgeland Avenue up to Ballmer Road, proceeds westbound to Harlem Avenue, and then goes south on Harlem Avenue, tying in into Cox Avenue. This year's projected projects, we are scheduling a village-wide leak detection survey. What the survey in details is, we will have a company, Emmy Simpson, run an acoustic-based diagnosis on entire, our entire water system, valves and water mains throughout the village. This analysis will determine if we have undetected leaks within our water infrastructure that have not come to surface. This helps keeps the village in compliance with Illinois EPA, helping us to reduce our unwatered, unmet water loss. There have been some concerns by a few residents regarding water quality in Madison, and I want to take this platform, use this platform to assure you that Madison's water quality is excellent. To make sure the quality stays excellent, you should know Public Works monitors our water, taking chlorine samples daily from several locations within the village, making sure we are in compliance with Illinois EPA and American Waterworks Association state-mandated recommendations. We additionally take bi-weekly samples and analysis alternating between 20 different location sites throughout the village. Those samples are sent out to an independently-owned state-certified lab and analyzed. The test results are returned clearly identifying safe or unsafe levels. I've asked a representative from Suburban Labs to join us here this evening to give her professional view and to verify the village's of Madison's taking water quality very serious, and we are in compliance. I want to bring before you at this time, Ms. Holly Stevenson.
Hi.
Hello. Yes.
Okay, awesome. Well, thank you so much for having me this evening. I just wanted to say if there's any common thread between our laboratory and the Village of Madison is that we place a high value on public health and safety. We've had a relationship with Village of Madison for a number of years, and they are very easy to work with because the water is clean. They do their sampling on time, and it is complete. Out of all of the EPA-required testing, they are always ahead of schedule. Like when I have to go and check towards the end of the month to make sure that they're within compliance with the EPA, they never show up on my list of people who are out of compliance, always on time. And another thing that I could say too is that even in just the last year alone, with the letting popper sampling that the Village of Madison had to do, there were zero homes above the action level, which is literally perfect. That's the desired result that you would want for anyone doing letting popper sampling. So all of their water is safe according to EPA standards. I'll turn it back to you, Gordon.
Thank you so much, Holly. We additionally annually send a comprehensive report that is mailed out to all residents and businesses in July. That report is called a CCR, Consumer Confidence Report. We are required by Illinois EPA to mail the sample results. Then throughout the year, we're required to mail all of the, the samples to our water customers. And this report is sent a copy to the businesses and the residents, and also we send a report to Illinois EPA. Additionally, we are required to document and record any and all violations. And I am pleased to say that we have not had any violations of any tampered or contamination with our water. The other projects we will be completing, including replacing and installing new water main valves and hydrants along Rose Lane. Rose Lane is located in the Apple Oak subdivision. The portion of main to be replaced will be between Pine Wood and Applewood. And I'm pleased to say the village is partnering with the Army Corps of Engineers in a joint effort to complete this project. We also have been working with a contractor to help us install LED lighting throughout the entire Village of Madison. We have installed LED lighting along Lincoln Highway, Governor's Highway, the southern region of Cicero Avenue, and the Ridgeland Manor subdivision, and around our Madison Avenue Business District. And we are working to complete, to have the entire town with LED lighting. We also will be completing a street resurfacing. It's scheduled to begin sometime in the early spring. We are slated to resurface on this year eight village streets. This surfacing project includes striping and pavement markings. We are planning to also do additional striping and pavement markings on other streets throughout the town outside of those that will be resurfaced. Well, last year, we entered into an agreement with a concrete contractor, and we started replacing sidewalks in all subdivisions, and the project had to end before completion due to a COVID outbreak with the contractor staff. But nevertheless, we will be concluding our sidewalk replacement contract project this spring, and we resume the remaining quantities that were slated to be replaced last fall. We will additionally be, continue with tree trimming, removals and replacement in various areas, replacing the street signs around town. And we will be out there working on the streets to make sure that our Madison residents are safe and will have well-travels. If there are any questions or concerns, please feel free to call the Public Works Office, and we will be more than pleased to help you and give you answers. This concludes my report this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Harden. Appreciate for all that great information. And please thank Holly for joining us tonight and giving us the information from the water sampling in our town. So really appreciate that.
Thank you.
Next person we have up, you know, we, we, again, special thanks, Chief Jones, during this pandemic, you know, the hard work that your staff did to help keep us up and running, and also to help us from an economic development side, keeping our businesses safe and making sure that they were not going above and beyond what we require for our residents, our restaurants and businesses to do during the pandemic. So Mr. Mike Jones will give us a report from the Police Department.
Thank you, Mr. Burton. Good evening, Madam President, Board, Staff, Residents. It's good to see everybody. My name is Michael Jones. I'm your police chief. I've been in law enforcement since 1997 and police chief for the last seven years. What's not on my resume is, I am likely the proudest chief in the region. It probably should be on my resume. I'm proud of the community police partnership that we've developed over all these years, as well as the officers that we have and the staff that we have throughout. It seemed like it was challenge after challenge hurdled at us, and our officers did not falter. They, they did not complain throughout the fear of the unknown. They handled calls. One of the earliest calls that we had in COVID was, we had to crawl up into a second-floor window to help an elderly person get back into bed, and that's when our COVID outbreak began. Yet officers continue to show up for work and work hard, and I'm very, very proud of that. I also want to say that one of the things that's, that's a hot topic right now is the Criminal Justice Reform Bill that has recently passed. I want to say that our department is a very progressive department. We're already doing a lot of the things that's already in that bill. So when that bill came out, we weren't worried. We already are accountable and transparent. We instituted body cameras two years ago before, before most of the agencies in our area. And I thank the Board for the assistance with that program. We already do training in cultural competency, in civil rights, social justice, and crisis intervention. So we are already hitting those benchmarks. So, so we're going to continue to work to be progressive and be that, that department that really shines in the area. In terms of statistics, this, this year has really been an anomaly. Typically, we have, we handle 25,000 calls per year, over 25,000 calls per year. We've hit that benchmark the last four years in a row. This past year, it was down to 21,000. We are one of the higher call volume per, per agency for our comparables. And I really attribute that to the partnership we have with the community. It tells me that when, when something's going on, if somebody's suspicious, our residents are calling, and that helps us reduce crime. Crashes is another benchmark. We're typically measured by crime and crashes, which really boils down to the safety and security of our residents, our business holders, and all the stakeholders in the Village of Madison. Typically, every year, we have approximately over 800 traffic crashes per year. It's more than two and a half per day. Last, 2019, we had 857 traffic crashes, which also resulted in 185 injuries. That's a lot. I attribute that because we are two things. We're a thoroughfare. Off of I-57, in order to get to Frankfurt, Olympia Fields, Park Forest, you have to go through Madison. Our roads are very, very well-traveled, and that leads to more crashes, especially with reckless driving. Last year, our numbers went down to 662 because frankly, a lot of people stayed home. So that, that was a much better number for us to digest. But we do work hard on traffic enforcement to reduce the number of crashes and just really keep people safe. Another reason why we have so many crashes is we're a destination. And as we continue to progress, and you'll hear more from our Economic Development Director and our Village Administrator, is that we're becoming more and more a destination. Some other numbers that were thrown at you, we're working on reducing arrests. We will make the arrests, especially when we have to. And I always tell the officers, it's not you arresting somebody. And I always tell the officers, it's not you arresting somebody, it's them arresting themselves for doing something uh, that's not uh, in line with the law. Um, our arrest last year was three hundred and fifteen, down from five hundred and seventy-five in previous years. If you compare that to the number of calls, uh, the twenty-one thousand uh, number, the twenty-five thousand number, it shows that the majority of our calls are service oriented. It's mediation. Uh, it's, it's working through a problem. It's, it's investigating and helping our, our residents. So I want you to keep that in mind. Um, you know, when you look at that modern day policing is the vast majority of it is really getting a call for service and helping people through their problem, whatever the problem may be. Um, currently we're uh, staffed at thirty-five sworn officers and approximately sixteen civilian uh, employees. Um, we're approved for forty-one officers. It's been difficult to reach that number. Uh, but with the help of the HR Department, we actually have three new officers uh, starting on Monday. And we will be sending them to the Police Academy the following Monday. So that begins their long career here in the Village of Madison, and I'm hoping that they have as, as a, as a fruitful and wonderful career as I have had. Um, we're going to continue to work with the HR Department. Uh, we actually, uh, in light of all the, the negative stuff that's going on in the world, uh, I feel like we're a, a bright light in the South suburbs because um, I talked to many other chiefs and having, having a hard time in recruitment. Yet we had one of the largest recruitment and testing processes during a pandemic. Uh, we actually had to turn people away at the door because we didn't have a facility big enough. Uh, that's amazing. And, and, and my hat's off to uh, Mr. Howard for all his hard work and his staff and, and really uh, showing that people do want to become the police. So we're working and towards hiring, and we're also working with the Village Administrator and the Board to increase our officer numbers. Because as we get more and more destinations, we know it's going to attract uh, the bad people. And it's our job to keep those bad people from doing bad things. Uh, statistically in the region, our critical incident numbers uh, are really low. But crime does happen, and we all know it. I, I know because we've gotten the calls. Uh, what's trending now in the region is burglaries to auto and vehicle thefts. We had had a few incidents in twenty-twenty of, of cars being stolen from people. Um, a lot of those incidents were vehicles left running. They were vehicles that were um, and, and left with the keys in the car at, at a gas station or another facility. Um, and we, and we discourage that, and we're off, our officers are out there trying to be visible and vigilant. Um, but each year we, we are seeing our burglaries to auto going down, and if you compare two thousand eighteen to two thousand twenty numbers, it's actually, we decreased more than sixty percent. So that's good. That means our, our residents are calling more and our officers are being more active. Um, uh, one of the other things that we recently instituted in two thousand twenty, and I applaud the Board for their vision on this. It was actually President uh, Chalmers Curran that uh, started me out, uh, down this road for uh, looking into license plate reader cameras. Um, uh, we, we instituted seventeen license plate reader cameras strategically located throughout our village on our thoroughfares. Uh, what these cameras do is they do, they serve basically two functions. They notify our officers whenever a stolen vehicle enters our town. Uh, our officers are, are then um, work, they work to locate the, the vehicle. Um, excuse me, uh, they work to locate the vehicle and either apprehend them or at least chase them out of town. Uh, we're seeing that uh, offenders, predators are using these stolen vehicles to commit more crimes. We've also just this past week, we, we've chased off two predators in stolen vehicles from our town. And though we weren't apprehending them, at least we know we can rest easy that they were not committing crimes in our village. Uh, so that's, that's what, what we call um, smarter policing and increasing the safety and security infrastructure of the Village of Madison. Uh, the other thing that those license plate reader cameras do is it helps us whenever a crime has happened and we want to find out more information, maybe we didn't have a lead and we couldn't actually apprehend somebody or, or get more information. Um, they've already helped us out make apprehensions on uh, criminal damage property incidents where we were able to capture a plate and some hit and run crashes where um, a victim was hit and somebody hit them, and we were able to get insurance information and find out who it was that hit them. So, so they've already paid dividends and I look to even more on dividends in the future. Uh, finally, as we continue to increase our abilities and strength of our department to keep our community safe, uh, I would say that I recently attended numerous uh, community forums. Uh, and some of the residents, one of the things they said that they liked about the Village of Madison is that it was safe. I took that to heart, uh, that made me feel good, but it also reinvigorated me to keep us all safe, to keep the Village of Madison a safe community to be in, and to keep working towards that so we can get more residents, more businesses and continue a high quality of life. Um, we do a lot of programs out of the Police Department. Um, I, I went down a list of programs to the President at one time, and she, she said, wow, I think you do as many programs as our community center, and that, that's cool. Um, we have a, a very vibrant community policing program. If you're not involved, I urge you to get involved, get informed, we'll help you. We have a senior, uh, an award-winning senior triad program where uh, forty to sixty senior citizens before COVID used to come to our Police Department every month just to learn and, and meet with me and, and uh, and, and our, our Community Policing Coordinator Mia Carter. We have a great Cadet Explorer Program. Every uh, fall we do Citizens Police Academy, and you may know that we've been doing uh, virtual safety seminars where um, where either myself, one of my officers or staff or Mia Carter would speak about ways to be safe. Uh, join your HOA um, uh, associations, become a block captain. Um, but get involved. There's so many programs. If you, if you want more information on any of the programs we run, uh, by, by all means, give us a call, uh, send me an email, and we'll be happy to find a way where you, where you fit in. Um, one of the last things I'll say is we strive for when we're not vigorously patrolling or handling a call uh, to look for ways for positive police interactions. Uh, this last year has been difficult for those opportunities. Um, we're happy to go to community events. Um, just limit the amount of hot dogs any of my officers eat because we're trying to stay healthy, but um, are all of our officers are looking for those positive police interactions, whether it's a foot patrol in a park, um, talking to kids, uh, getting out at a bank, at a restaurant. Um, every one of my officers is required to carry a police sticker badges in their pockets and, and, you know, we urge kids to come up to us and, and ask a question, talk to us, and we'll be happy to give them a sticker badge and find other ways. So uh, that is my message. It's very happy to be here and, and we'll, we'll continue to uh, uh, keep us uh, all safe in this village moving forward. Thank you, Mr. Burton.
Thank you, uh, Chief Jones, and thank you in your department for keeping us safe. So we appreciate that. Um, the next person we have up um, is Mr. Rashid Jones. He was introduced earlier by our Human Resource Director, Dwayne Howard. Um, here to give us some good information about what's going on with our finances, Mr. Rashid Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Burton. Good evening, everyone. Good evening, everyone. My name is Rashid Jones, and I'm the Finance Director for the Village of Madison. I recently started with the village in August of twenty twenty and immediately hit the ground running. One of the first items on my agenda was the completion of the fiscal year twenty twenty audit. Um, this audit was conducted by the independent accounting firm Crowe LLP. Crowe uh, happens to be one of the top ten accounting firms in the nation, and they issued a clean opinion on the fiscal year twenty twenty audit. Um, this means that the, the audit was fairly stated, free from material misstatement, and accurately presented. The village will be submitting this report to the Government Finance Officers Association uh, for the award uh, for, for the Certificate of Achievement in Financial, Financial Excellence for Reporting Award. Um, and we expect to receive that uh, in the next few months. Crowe LLP also conducting the audit of the village's TIF funds. Each of the TIF funds was reviewed independently to ensure that they were in compliance with all applicable statutes, laws and regulations. Crowe issued a clean opinion on those uh, TIF funds as well. Uh, the next item that will be on my agenda will be the completion of the upcoming fiscal year budget. Under the guidance and leadership of the Village President, the Village Administrator, and the Finance Committee members, Trustee Harden and Trustee Shorter, the village, um, we expect to present a balanced and complete budget to the full board for approval within the next few months. If any resident has any questions or would like further information or would like to see those reports, please contact the Finance Department uh, via phone or via email, and I'll be happy to provide those. Thank you, Mr. Burton.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Jones, and, and we always love to hear clean, um, great opinions, and we definitely love the fact that we're, we're going for the GFOA award. I think that is remarkable. Uh, we have not had that award in many years, just to know that you hit the ground running to get that award here is just remarkable. So we really appreciate the hard work in just this short period of time. So thank you, Mr. Mr. Jones. Uh, next we have up, um, for, you know, we're seeing a lot of movement happening in, along Lincoln Highway and throughout the Village of Madison. Uh, we have Ms., uh, we have LeVar Murphy, who's coming here for my Economic Development Team, LeVar Murphy.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Burton. And um, thank you, Madam President, Board of Trustees, our residents who are attending with us this evening. Um, I would like to share my screen with you if I can um, for my presentation. All right. Can everyone see my presentation? Okay?
Yes.
All right. Good deal. Okay, so the first um, slide that you see here is the Home for Business and a Heart for Family. So this is the tagline that we use and the message that we want to convey to any prospective resident or business that we're trying to lure here to the Village of Madison. You know, marketing is very vital and it's just as important as our economic development because it sends the message when we're not in the room. And so these are some of the things that we want our prospective businesses and residents to know that when you come here to the Village of Madison, you know, it's a family. It is definitely a family, and I believe um, our HR Director mentioned that earlier. But we consider ourselves a home for business and a heart for family. So here are the goals for economic development growth. Um, when we're out there pursuing different business development um, as it relates to the Village of Madison, you know, we're focused on strengthening and diversifying the tax base. So as you know, we're shifting from retail. We were always a retail hub, but as things are shifting with more online purchasing and things of that sort, we have to diversify um, our mix to make sure if one particular category does fall weak, we have our other diversified industries in which we're focusing on to make sure that the community stays stable. And some of those things are more industrial, more manufacturing, those sort of things that we're entertaining that's outside the normal retail. We're also continuing to create business and entertainment establishments for residents and visitors, um, promote positive environment to prospective um, business and residents through our marketing efforts as well, which is what I've mentioned. Creating opportunities for employment, you know, that is so important, not only when we bring different businesses in, but we're creating jobs for individuals within the region as well as our community. And it's very vital that we are supporting retaining our businesses once they're here. We have our Economic Development Commission that are out on a monthly basis that are visiting our businesses, making sure that um, there's any red flags, any signs, any concerns, as well as accomplishments that they're coming back, reporting, sharing and making sure that we are keeping the line of communication open with our businesses. Because again, we do want to make sure there is sustainability. So let's talk about how we're following plans to make sure that we are shaping the village future. Uh, you heard earlier as we talked about um, one of our most recent plans. But you know, over the years, we have definitely been doing a variety of plans, starting with the retail reinvestment study. You know, this study gave us the decision-making process for how retailers thinks, how brokers think. Give us some insight on their perception of how they view the village and gave us some insight showing that we need to brand ourselves and separate ourselves um, and make ourselves unique to get noticed. So again, having some of this report back gave us a chance to put some policies in place, some strategies in place to make sure that we can continue to grow ourselves. Also, another um, plan that we done in recent years was the Master Plan for Economic Development and Land Use. And so this particular plan identified our strengths, our weaknesses, our opportunities, as well as threats um, for the community. Concept for repurposing Lincoln Mall came out of this plan, the demolition of Lincoln Mall, how we can implement more marketing, again, to make sure that we are attracting the right users here to our community. And then also it followed up with the market study as well. Uh, the market study here, it was the feasibility study, which showed the percentage of land use in which the former Lincoln Mall can support, that how it will be the catalyst for more development within our community. And it also showed how much that the public, the Village of Madison, can support when we're trying to lure different land uses here to the Village of Madison. And then as of recent, last summer, we adopted the Streetscape Plan. Public workshops were held. We received feedback from our community as well. And this particular project, it provides guidance on key recommendations and strategies in order to make a functional and beautiful multimodal environment for our community. So you will see things like wayfinding signage that will be happening this year, again, more aesthetics um, in order to keep our community moving forward. And then lastly, as our Community Development Director mentioned, that um, our comprehensive plan, a lot of you also, you know, came out to the public workshops which were held Zoom. The feedback was taken in and which helped us come up with this final plan. And so how the future will be laid out for the Village of Madison, and that's what it provides. It provides the roadmap. It provides the vision of how the Village of Madison will be seeing for years to come, and then how we can apply uh, different funding mechanisms to carry out these programs. So as you see, over the years, there's been a wealth of plans. These plans are needed in order to move us forward. So because change is constant, that's the one thing that always change, change is, is never constant, I should say. And so we just always have to make sure that we're moving that needle, and when we're moving that needle, we're making progress. And because things are constantly changing, work is never done, but we have yet to keep moving. We keep moving that uh, needle and making sure that we're progressing and moving the village forward. So behind all of our successes with the business development that has come to the Village of Madison, there's the utilization for incentives. Incentives are needed, public-private partnerships, they're critical to business development. And although we may look at it as large companies have deep pockets and why is it that we need to subsidize some of these businesses? But they're needed. You know, think about our purchases that we um, make and things that we need, um, be it a car, a large appliance. Sometimes we wait for that rebate, we wait for that sale. Well, that's the company subsidizing, discounting in order to intrigue us to go ahead and make that decision power sooner versus later. And so, you know, just to kind of break analogy down and understand why we give incentives, why they're needed. These are some of the toolbox in which we utilize um, in order to attract development. We have TIF, sales tax rebate, business district, facade programs, our enterprise zone, and of course, Class Eight. Some of these are state um, initiatives in order for us to um, utilize these incentives to attract different development. And so that's exactly what they do, and they help also retain business and not just lure business as well. Um, again, when I talk about how they provide public-private partnership, you know, we're filling gaps. We're just not, you know, nilly-willy, I guess, incentivizing different businesses. There's typically a gap which is needed between the private equity of a developer that comes to the table and then the conventional loan that they're able to get. Typically, a conventional loan for any project goes up as far as sixty percent. And so you have your equity from the private, and sometimes there are subsidies and assistance from the village that's needed in order to bring that project to fruition and structure that deal correctly. We also have our Class Eight. Our Class Eight levels the playing field. You know, as you, most, everyone is aware, we're adjacent to Will County. You know, Will County taxes are not as um, expensive as Cook County. And so in order for us to remain competitive, we have to be on the same playing field. Otherwise, the opportunity and the challenges in which we face with the disparity in reference to the property taxes becomes a challenge for us to continue to attract business to the Village of Madison. And then we have our TIF. TIF assists with costly infrastructure, be it roads, be it the extension of water main lines for projects. And so TIF allows us the opportunity to partner with some of these developments in order to make those um, deals happen. And so this is why we use incentives. And so this is why we use incentives. And of course, we always make sure there's clawbacks. We make sure there's performance clause in order for them to continue their incentives as well. And so here is just, you know, we want to welcome some of the recent developments that have happened in the Village of Madison. So much has been going on. We have been showing substantial growth over the last several years. None of these things could not have happened without, you know, the leadership of our village president, our Board of Trustees, who are supportive in reference to staff going out, bringing in projects, and having the policies in place in order for us to continue to move the village forward. So as you see, here's the comprehensive list of all the projects that have happened over the last couple of years. And of course, we've had groundbreakings, we've had ribbon cuttings, Sam's Club, which we are very proud of, actually. You know, of course, we all know that our Walmart and our Sam's left, and you know, now they've come back and they started off in the Sam's Club, and they don't service the outside, but they service online. Online reaches a span of 200 miles outside of the Madison area, which that's, you know, sales in which Sam's Club is actually picking up, which is more than when they were actually having the foot traffic to come in. And not only are they just operating in the Sam's Club, but they've grown so much because of the use of internet, is that they've now taken over the former Walmart, expanded there, increased their employment to close to 500 employees with this particular expansion as well. We've had other ribbon cuttings, as you can see, and groundbreakies, and new restaurants that have come, and signage for our historic Madison, which has been a long time waiting. And then, of course, we had our press conference with Amazon, where we had the governor out, the Cook County President, a lot of other dignitaries that were out there to help support the groundbreaking ceremony for our Amazon. We also have Madison Arthodontis, and you know, that one was another project in which great partnership with the Cook County, with the South Suburban Land Bank, where they were able to convert this dilapidated old motel, demolish it, and bring us this beautiful office building to continue further growth in the village. This is the groundbreaking again for the South Suburban Humane Society that will be coming to the village as well. And who can't forget, just recently, our grand opening for our Peace Fresh Market. You know, we're very excited, and I'm sure most of you have gone and experienced the new grocery store, which is not just the grocery store, it's an experience when you go there. It's more than just groceries. You know, there's an area for fresh popcorn, you know, juice bars, smoothie bars, a bar, restaurant. They thought of everything in the store, and they went beyond the call of duty with this. And not only, they started with 76,000 square feet, and they grew to 86,000 with them going through the plans and just wanting to give us a store, which was so deserving. And this could not have been done without the help of other elected officials as well that have been coming to the table. And these developments which you are seeing that are taking place now, seeds were planted. Unfortunately, economic development happens, it takes time, right? It takes years sometimes, longer than just a couple of months. Unlike, you know, fire, if there's a fire, we can go put that fire out, you're instantaneously seeing that result. But with economic development, there's a lot of things behind the scenes that are being done that stays in a pipeline and necessarily don't see until the groundbreaking or the ribbon cutting. So we're very excited about those things that are happening. Here, I want to introduce our interactive map. And this is something was, is a part of our accomplished map, which we're able to now make it more interactive versus static. This is one of the projects that our Community Development Director came in with, and we're putting everything on this particular map. So if you go on the website, and you will go under the interactive map, if you want to see any projects and where they're located and what we're doing, you can see there's economic development, any road improvements, new sidewalks, light signals, all those things can share with you where they are located just by putting your mouse on here. So for Amazon, you can see here how, right over in the corner, there's Amazon at Palmer and Harlem in the northeast corner. You know, here's another project, you know, that has to be talked about. A lot of times, again, we see the groundbreaking. They came to us within six months, they were able to put a shovel in the ground. A lot of times that is unheard of. But because of the relationships that our village president and our Board of Trustees have with outside elected officials with, at the state level, at the county level, we were able to move things at a very rapid pace in order for Amazon to break ground and stick to their timeline in order to open, which will be later on this summer. Also too, if you were to click your mouse here, RNL Carriers is another project that will be breaking ground soon in the Village of Madison. They have 112 acres. They'll be producing 237 bays. And RNL Carriers is equivalent to you like your FedEx, your DHL. They actually carry products to their different clientele. And so it's just another form of how things are distributed. And then also too, if you click your map to the Humane Society, which will be down here. The Humane Society will be joining the Village of Madison as well, which we're very excited about, with the dog park, walking trails, and just a nice rescue facility for those who would like to just come and adopt pets. It will be the largest humane society in the South Suburban area. And then Alexi Senior Living Facility. They will be opening up fairly soon, and we'll be conducting the ribbon cutting for them as well. We're excited to have them here. It's, this is an 81,000 square foot senior living facility. We took a tour there maybe a month ago, and they did not miss anything. All the bells and whistles in reference to a senior living facility, anything from hair salon, movie theater, workout, they really covered things to make sure that this was a luxury living facility that has been developed here in the Village of Madison. And so what's on the future outlook for the Village of Madison and economic development? One will be the Innovative Technology Center that will be coming to the Village of Madison at 4343 Lincoln Highway. And so with the Innovative Technology Center, basically, we'll be having a lot of startup businesses, making sure they have all the technical skills that are needed in order to grow from being a startup to making sure that they get that storefront or their building, and whichever that they need in order to continue to grow. Making sure 100, that the auto mall is 100% occupied. We fill the last vacancy just late last year, where the auto dealer, Gerald Auto, actually bought the last vacant auto dealership there, which has pretty much completed the auto mall here in the Village of Madison. And then, of course, we have the streetscape that has been finalized by our board. You'll start to see things implemented there, anywhere from your streetscape wayfinding signage. So individuals and visitors that are coming in will have various signs in order to know where to find certain things within our community, focusing on Market Square Crossing, repurposing some of our big boxes. And then we just talked about, again, RNL Distribution Center, another Central Truck Properties is coming, as well as focusing on workforce development. With all the huge development that's going on, it's very critical to make sure that we're investing in workforce development, to make sure that they're sustainable as well when we talk about our businesses, and making sure that the employees having the adequate skills that are needed in order to remain and sustain with our businesses that we bring here to the Village of Madison. And so, of course, as we talk about Market Square Crossing, with everything being developed or demolished, we're looking at a clean slate now. And so we're ready to make new dreams at the former Lincoln Mall area. And so it will be a mixed-use development. And when we talk about mixed-use development, that's just a mix of different land uses from your residential, sports, entertainment, other retail. And we're making sure that it is a walkable community as well, just a community within a community. And so we're very excited about being able to focus on this particular project. And things like this, it takes time to build these developments of, especially one of this magnitude, when you're looking at 60 acres, that will need to be developed here in the Village of Madison. And so right now, what's going on is some of the under, underlying civil engineering with your infrastructure, topography, and also the, also survey, to make sure those things are cleaned up. So when developers are at the table, then they know how the land is laid. And so here's the framework of how the mixed-use development will be laid out for the Market Square Crossing. There's multiple parcels, right, that we will be breaking up. There will be a two-acre parcel here in the center, and then spread out from there, there will be different development. And as you see here, to the northwest section, is where we're proposing the casino if Madison is awarded. I should take that back, not if, when Madison is awarded the casino license, this particular project will go in the northwest corner of the project. And then we're able to continue to develop as normal as we originally created the framework. And again, this came out of the planning, you know, studies in which we've done in the past. So all of these studies give us roadmaps on where to go, so that we're not moving willy-nilly in the future with all of our plans. We have roadmaps that are guiding us to make sure that we are viable, we are sustainable for years to come. And with that being said, that concludes my report, and I thank you for your time for listening to economic development. Thank you.
Thank you, Laverne Murphy, for that information. A lot of information, no doubt, and we really appreciate that. Great hard work happening from that department to keep us moving forward. And as Laverne mentioned earlier, it does not happen without the great leadership of our president, our Board of Trustees, and also our, our Economic Development Commission. I want to make sure we do emphasize them also, because they do some of the work behind the scene that we don't always, you know, think about. They do a lot of work behind the scenes. So we also want to thank our Economic Development Commission, and all the commissions for that matter, who are doing great work, including our Plan Commission and, and Police and Fire Commission, who are doing great work to keep us also intact. Let me just say that, you know, one of the things that Laverne talked about was we create a lot of jobs. I think in this, what we looked at, all the stuff we're talking about, I think we're going to create somewhere around 3,600 jobs over the next couple of years. I think that's important to say, because that's a lot of jobs being created right here in our town. Hopefully, those jobs do create an opportunity for us to look at things and reducing taxes. I think one of, somebody made that, that question came out, you know, reducing taxes. I think these are things that we do now. Do you, do we really reduce them, or do we stabilize? But I think the biggest thing is that we stabilize taxes. And I think that's our goal, is to make sure we stabilize our taxes and not so much let it keep, continue to go up. So I, I thank you for all the work that we're doing to make sure we are stable as a community as a whole. So the last person that we have is our, Lisa Hill from our Recreation Department. As we all know, COVID hit that department really hard in 2020, but we are looking forward to 2021 as we get ready to reopen and get things going back, and particularly with our youth, and get our kids and sports and our seniors back to exercise, et cetera. So Lisa Hill.
Thank you, Mr. Burton. I appreciate you introducing me. Thank you to Madam President, the Board of Trustees, the Village Clerk, staff, residents. I'm so happy to be here today. Again, my name is Lisa Hill. I'm Deputy Director of Recreational Services Division at the Madison Community Center. Like Mr. Burton stated, that our department was hit pretty bad during this pandemic, but I'm here to say that we are back open on a small scale. And I'd like to thank the residents who have joined us during this time, trusting in us that we are keeping them safe while they're exercising and making sure everything is clean. And I do appreciate them putting their trust into us. Currently, our hours of operation, like I said, is limited hours, but we are going to expand those hours on April the 5th. We're going to open up the center Monday through Friday, 6:00 AM to 2:00 PM. We're going to close for one hour for closing from 2:00 to 3:00 PM. And then we'll, we'll be back open from 3:00 PM to 8:00 PM. So we're expanding those hours out with more people getting the vaccine. We're getting our staff back slowly, but surely so, we're able to keep expanding those hours. And our, our hope is to just every month, try to add something else to our plate and just keep extending out to offer that for our residents. We also have our office hours open Monday through Friday from 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM, because we're going to be having a lot of registration opportunities and new things that are coming up. So we want to be there to provide that information and time for you. We also have a membership that's $25. This membership is non-recurring, so no need to worry of the billing cycle to go through your account. We're going to take care of that manually for you, and it's $25. And if you don't want that membership, we do have a $5 guest pass drop-in fee. Those amenities do only include the fitness center at this time, due to our pool is currently down due to maintenance. But we do offer a fitness class, which is a cycle class. It's on Tuesday nights at 7:00 PM, but that class is by appointment only because the, the space is limited due to all the restrictions. Again, appointments for the fitness center will be lifting April 5th. So because of the restrictions have increased, we're able to allow more guests in the center, and you don't have to make the appointment. So we're trying to make it easier for our residents and guests, members and guests, to enjoy the center. We are going to start our spring, spring cleaning also, kicking off that in March and April. Some of those cleaning things consist of getting the shampoo, the carpets, de-cleaning our floors, the walls, and particularly our gym floors. We also are happy to introduce a new registration software that is going to launch this summer, 2021. It is a cloud-based software. This software is called Community Pass. Community Pass is the leader in recreation and school management cloud-based software since 2002. Community Pass is an innovative software program that enables individuals and families the ability to register via online. Community Pass gives the ability to register membership, camp registration, sports programs, activities quickly, easily, and securely. Community Pass includes a carefully instructed, comprehensive combination of products and services providing, supporting online, phone-in, mail-in, walk-in, and registration, credit card, check, and cash payment processing, and self-service site. We found that with this pandemic, that this service will be so much, will be helpful to our community, so that you can do all your online registrations, and you can feel safe doing that if you do not feel comfortable coming into the center. So we're making it easy for you to do that. We do have a few programs that we are offering. We have our second session of our Young Grim Grant drawing classes. Those are virtual classes. Wednesday is the cartooning drawing class that's going to start March the 31st at 5:30 PM to 6:30. And on Fridays, we're going to have the elementary drawing from at, on March the 26th at 4:30 to 5:30. I'm happy to announce that we're going to have the Easter egg dash this year. We're going to be, bring that back. Unfortunately, the Easter bunny won't be there, but that's okay. We're going to have fun without him. It'll be located on the soccer field on April the 3rd at 10:00 AM. And the cost for that's $3. So the space will be limited. We're asking that you bring your own basket to collect your items. But we're going to have the Easter egg hunt, candy, and prizes. So we're really excited about that. So please call us for that registration. We're also going to be offering a virtual class, Rules of the Road. That's going to be March the 19th at 10:00 AM, 10 to 12:00 PM. Please call us to register for that, and I'll be offering that Zoom link for you. And we have a summer camp. So last year, we did not do a summer camp due to the pandemic. So we're going to try our best to offer that for you at a limited opportunity here. On June the 7th, it will start through June, June 7th through July 30th. And we're opening that registration up on April the 5th. And like I said, those spaces will be limited. And like I said, those spaces will be limited as well. It's going to be Monday through Friday, eight AM to five. And we will be offering some before care and after care and some great amenities for kids, some sports, academics, dance and musics, just to name a few, but just please again, call our office. I'm happy to say that we're going to be opening up our rentals for the parks since we're, some of the restrictions are lifted. We'll be taking those registrations April fifth. Remember, office will be open, so you can come in to make those registrations. It is first come, first served on those parks and the field house. Last but not least, we will have early voting at the center starting March twenty second through April the fifth, Monday through Friday, nine AM to five PM, Saturdays, nine AM to five and Sunday, ten AM to four PM. Again, I want to really send a personal shout out, a special thank you to my staff and all the residents again who trust us and our commissioners who helped me through all the pan, through this pandemic and bringing our center to where we are today. And I couldn't do that without the board and Mr. Burton and staff and, and the residents to trust in us to do that. So again, thank you so much for having me tonight. I had a wonderful time. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa Hill. Great, great information, a lot of good information and it's exciting. I mean, hopefully we can get back to that day when we can have our kids and people run around soccer fields, baseball fields. Can't wait for it. I mean, it's just been way too long. I feel like it's been forever. And as a sports fanatic, it really, you know, it bugs me, you know, that not to see kids run around playing sports. So we're going to get there, we're going to get there.
We are.
All together. So thank you all my, all the party heads. Thank every one of you all for all that great information. I know we did get some questions that came from online prior to the meeting. And I have Lori Webster, who's going to speak about all the questions that came. I think we may have gotten a couple that came in. We originally were not going to have it coming through that way because we wanted to make sure that we were, we didn't get inundated with questions. But Ms. Lori Webster, you have those questions. So if you don't mind, go ahead and start with those questions. And I know a few of them you were able to give to us ahead of time, so go ahead, Ms. Webster.
I say that, okay, I'm going to start with the questions we get prior to the meeting. We had some comments and some questions from the public. The first question we have is, wow, I would love for additional retail to come to Madison. The new trend is Amazon. Consequently, countless storefronts are closing. What is the plan to draw new restaurants to Madison? Ms. Murphy, would you like to expound on that question?
I'm sure. Thank you, Lori. It's a very good question. And so, you know, we are definitely working towards bringing different restaurant opportunities here to the village of Madison. Actually, we have a couple in the pipeline now that will be opening up soon here in the village of Madison. Casa Del Taco, we have Crazy Hog that's coming. Red Star, which is another restaurant is coming as well. We have some other restaurants that will be rebranding as well. And then there's a couple in the pipeline which we cannot announce as of yet, but they will be coming to the forefront. Also too, another thing that we're working on are small businesses. You know, there are a lot of startup businesses that are out there that know the trade, know how to, you know, run a restaurant, but they lack the capital. And so right now, we're looking to put things in place in order to help some small businesses bring their restaurants here to the village of Madison as well. So those things are being worked on and you will start to see more restaurants come online that we are working with.
Thank you, Ms. Murphy. The next question we have from the public.
Ms. Webster, can I also add that, you know, you know, the things like Amazon, like Pete's, like Alexi Builders, I want to also help us spur those different restaurants to our town, no question. Laverne Murphy is fielding calls every day around those different businesses to bring other businesses to our area. Just want to make sure that, you know, that what, what we're bringing now is going to help spur that.
And, and Mr. Burton, you can also mention that, like what we've brought in already. We know that individuals are so interested in being a part of, of Amazon and what's coming. So I know that she can't mention some of the, the, the interests and some of the restaurants that are planning on coming because they haven't, the ink is not dried. But we are sure, assured that more is to come, that the village of Madison is moving forward, especially in reference to bringing in new entities into our village. So I'm really excited about that.
Absolutely.
Thank you. All right, the next question we have from the public is, why is the village president referring to her title as mayor? Mr. Burton, do you want to answer that question?
Sure, you know, we, we've definitely heard that recently in many different avenues. You know, by state stature and in Illinois municipal code, and it's, it's read very, very easily on, on the municipal code that mayor slash president is a chief executive officer of a city shall be a mayor. And then the chief executive officer of a village shall be village president, who is also called mayor. By state stature, and the reason why they did it because mayor is a more, more common name for the person who's the village president, but by state stature, that person can be called mayor or, or village president. But let me note, a mayor cannot be called village president. So it's the opposite, but because she's a village president, she can always be called mayor.
Thank you for that.
You're welcome.
All right, our next question is, and this may have been answered during the presentation, but I do want to let the public know their questions are heard. Is the water in the village of Madison safe? Gordon, would you like to expound on that question?
Sure will. Yes, absolutely. Our water is absolutely safe. I drank it. I would let my children, my children drank it, my grandchildren drank it. And we substantiate that by, as I said, the samples that we take. And as I said, we take samples within our town daily, daily, even on weekends. And then we do bi-weekly samples. And we also do tri-hel methane samples and we do our lead and copper samples. And that is all substantiated in our consumer confidence report. And you can pick one of those up from the village hall. They're absolutely free to be given and I, I absolutely stand behind, I put my life on.
Thank you for that. All right, the next question is, why is the village spending money on a comprehensive plan? Mr. Roberts, would you care to answer that question?
Thanks, Lori. Coming from the consultant side of things, this is my fourth comprehensive plan. Let me tell you, it's absolutely imperative that each town has a comprehensive plan. Why do I say that? Federal funds are dependent on that. In a lot of cases, when we're going for grants, one of the first questions they ask is, is there an updated comprehensive plan? And one of the other good things about the plan is it, it encompasses all of the past plans that we've had, number one. And number two, when shovel-ready monies come from the federal state government, we already have all those things codified. Okay, so the comprehensive plan provides both a short-term and a long-term vision for where the village is going to go in each area, whether it's transportation, whether it's economic development, infrastructure, so on and so forth. So the plan there is to be there for number one, so that the residents can get educated as far as where we going, where the pass was, and on top of that, to find out in our implementation section shows all of the federal funding and state funding opportunities that we have. So as a staff and as department heads, it gives us a, a very sharp planning tool, not only in the short term, but you know, we're talking ten, fifteen, twenty years down the line. So let me also say that the comprehensive plan is not a static document. It is a document that needs to be revisited every, so often every couple of years. Because as things, as you could see with economic development and other elements of the village is growing at a substantial rate. And so we want to make sure that the document is reflective of all of the growth and all of the things that are going on in town. One of the other things that we try to do, at least from my standpoint, is what I've noticed is whenever there's state or federal projects that are going on inside of the village limits, we also want to codify that inside the plan as well. One of the things that was happening in the past was when plans were going on or when state agencies were doing infrastructure projects, the village wasn't consulted until the project was almost in construction. And that caused a lot of issues. So what we've done is I've reached out to a lot of the federal agencies, I dot C dot, Horse Preserve District of Cook County, any, any agency that's doing work within our village. We want to make sure that we have a voice and a say from the planning aspect all the way to construction. All of those projects that we're aware of are also codified in those, in the comprehensive plan too as well. So it's absolutely a very, very vital document to have, not only for the short term, but the long term as well.
Thank you, Mr. Roberts. We did have one question that came in the chat, a question in the comment. I know that we would like to wish for best terms for the development of the casino. However, is there an alternative plan for that space if the village has not awarded the casino license?
That's a great question. It's a great question, and I think that Laverne Murphy can definitely answer that question.
Yes, absolutely. So that's the beauty of having a flexible plan with the framework which we've created. Actually, prior to the casino being an option there, there was actually development there for continued residential with your shops at the bottom. So this plan is very flexible and it allows us to entertain the casino. And we're not going to talk about not getting the casino, but we're still able to move that plan forward. You know, so that's the beauty of having our flexible plan for the market square crossing. And we will continue to execute our vision as we move forward with the framework that we have in place.
Thank you, Ms. Murphy. The next question we have, please discuss the new administrative building for school district one fifty nine.
Thanks, I take that. Oh, I'm sorry. You know what, I, I would have to say that, you know, we can definitely discuss some of it, but here's the big thing. It's really not our jurisdiction. That is the school district one fifty nine jurisdiction. You know, all we, we have, we know that there's some plans being in place, but we don't have the jurisdiction to really discuss what school district one fifty nine is doing as far as their school administration building is concerned.
Yeah, I think, I thank you for doing that because that would be crossing the line. We basically would not have any jurisdiction over that. And I think it would probably be a conversation that may be to be brought to one fifty nine to have further discussion on there or even talk about what they're doing and how they're moving forward. For us to get into a discussion about that, we would be crossing the line as to if, in fact, that would be like having them discuss what we're building and why we're building it. So thank you for, for clearing.
Okay, thank you, Madam President. The last comment and question we have from Ken Williams is, I recently purchased my second home in Madison. I intend on raising my family in my hometown. I have a four-year-old and a four-month-old. I would like for there to be more youth facilities and quality of life for business in the village. I want to spend my money in my neighborhood instead of having to go to Orland or Hammond. Is there a concerted effort to improve the overall quality of life for young families in the village?
Well, I could start off and I'll let Mr. Burton talk more about that. I've lived in a village for thirty-five years and I've raised my family here. My daughter now teaches here in the village of Madison. And one of the things that I started off talking about when I first came into office is to make sure that we have individuals keep their monies right here in the village of Madison. And we've started to do that by, with a grocery store, with some of the other things that we're bringing into the village. We want individuals to be right here and spend their monies here and have the best quality of life. So we're already starting that. I hope that we can continue this summer with some of the concerts that we've had in the past so that individuals can come out in a village and be in a community that we love and communicate together. That and our senior involvement. And of course, we want to make sure that our youth are here and have all that they deserve right here in the village of Madison. And Mr. Burton, you could talk about some of the efforts that we're doing in reference to our youth and the programs that we plan on putting forward.
Sure, you know, you know, the one good thing is that, of course, even in this summer, you know, we, we, our hopes is to get our, you know, our community center back open and continue to push some of the major programs that we're doing there. I think as much as we may not know that we have one of the, we have a, first of all, a state-of-the-art community center, but it's actually one of the most recognized communities in the entire South of Ever Legion. And so I think that that tells, that says a lot, not just for the, for Lisa Hill and, and leadership at the community center, but also the board to, to be on the forefront, to push something that, that forward to ensure that our residents have something that they can enjoy for years to come. And that's, that's vitally important. I think the stuff that's happening around Lincoln Mall and, and, and the things that we're going to see at Lincoln Mall, I think that's going to help aid some of those things that we're talking about also. But I'll tell you, the, the movement that we're having right now is going to touch just about every portion of our life, of our society and our quality of life. I mean, when you look at everything that's happening from Harlem all the way to Main Street, we're going to start seeing those things happen in our town. It's going to help revitalize that quality of life that was talked about by the, by the resident. And we will definitely do those things. We also have some projects that have not come to fruition yet, but we are working extremely hard to get some things on some land south of, of Lincoln Mall that is more on the recreational side to ensure that our kids and, and our adults even in this case can have some things to do. That's not just your typical traditional recreation, but even more outside the box recreation. So we, we're looking forward to doing those things. Also, let me just say, summer camp starts again this summer, both for the village of Madison, but also for our, our cast camp with the police department. I think that's important to notice, note also that we are doing more things there to ensure that, you know, we have camps, not just for one block of here, but we have multiple blocks of camps that available to our youth. Lisa, I don't know if you want to add anything else to that or, or Mike?
Thank you, Mr. Burton. Sure. Again, just to iterate what you said, yeah, we're going to bring our programs back safely. Summer camp, our sports, our youth sports and things like that. So please look out for all those events, baseball, basketball. And we're trying to do some of those things outside, so the basketball, so that people do feel comfortable. So we just want to make sure they call the community center and just, you know, ask us, we know what we have available. So, and we can, if you feel comfortable, we can register you through the phone and things like that. So we will have, have those programs coming soon.
Thank you, Lisa. And then one of the great ideas that staff has been discussing over the last couple, actually over the last couple of months, and even we, it goes back into twenty twenty, things like we're looking at ways that we could possibly create things like snow sleds and ice skating ponds, even for the winter time. Those are things that we are looking and trying to find a way to ensure that we bring even those type things back to the villages of Madison. And those were, they were great things that were here in the past and we are, we are, we are discussing that internally as an entire staff. I think every department was involved in that conversation. But those are things that we are looking at for the future to bring back those things to the villages of Madison.
Yeah, Mr. Burton, you mentioned cast camps, it's cops and students together that we've run for the past, I don't know how many years, at least a decade. We also do things like ski with the chief every year where we take a group of kids, uh, snow skiing that may have never snow skied before. Uh, and I try to go out there and not get hurt. We also take our kids to water parks and all kinds of things. This past year, we, we were awarded a pretty sizable grant for police youth services for a mentorship program. We've also, last year, we took kids to a bowls game in a suite, which is very, very fancy. And, and we actually, one of our retired officers and security guard on the court. And after the game, we actually were able to bring the youth onto the court, which is an experience I've never even had. So we do a lot, I think when the president came on, her focus was not just community, but also seniors and youth. And I think that our village comparatively does a phenomenal job, so we continue to do that.
So. One, another question that did come up was, you know, mentioned, you know, what's going on with our parks and redevelopment of all of our parks. You know, with the great help of our state legislators, our state rep, Debbie Myers Martin, Senator, Senator Mike Hastings, along with our board, we are going to, we were able to receive a substantial grant that's going to allow us to redo every park in the villages of Madison. And so that work will, is planned to begin this spring. And I think that's substantial that every single park, well, at least I'm sorry, community parks, the seven community parks will be revitalized this summer. And I think that's a great thing to have for our village. So yes, that is definitely going to happen this year. And, and, and also, don't, we won't forget about our trails. We have some of the best trails in the Chicagoland region. Our trails go miles and miles. And so I think it's important that we note that we have some of the best trails. And we are also working on potentially a plan to hopefully eventually. Um, and we are also working on potentially a plan to hopefully eventually connect our preservation path to the three-point-six miles um trail on um Volmer, um because it it stops, and there's not a connection, so hopefully we'll get that connected soon in the future. Thank you, Ms. Webster, um for that, um for the questions. Uh, anything, any other questions?
No, that's it.
That's it, okay. Um, you know, I will say that, you know, uh, Madam President and Board of Trustees, thank you all for being here with us. Um, it is, I just so you, let you all know, it's encouraging when you are on the phone with us as staff. Um, it tells us that that we we are, we got backing, um when we're talking about these things. Um, it really does give us um um a a good feeling to know that you're here with us as we discuss these things. Um, I also will say that to the residents, this is recorded. Um, this will be um uh posted um in the in the near future, but also if you have any other questions that you have for us in the future, feel free to reach out to the village. We will answer any question you have. You can email us or send us a, um, uh, can call us, emails, however you want to get in touch with us. We will answer those questions um and get back to you on those things. We look forward to our future, and um I I I think that we have a a great future for the Village of Madison, um and and I look forward to um helping and this group of leaders helping lead this village to the to the right direction. Madam President, you have anything else you want to say?
I want to ta- tell the community to stay safe, to stay involved, and to continue to look to us as we move forward. There are a lot of things that we have that are positive. I am fortunate enough to have a board that works with us and a staff that works very diligently, and that's why we've been able to complete so many projects and do so well. There are so many communities that are envious of what we're doing right here in the Village of Madison, and for that reason alone, I want to thank this board for supporting the vision and for staff for putting forth all of the effort. So thank you, and thank you to the community. Please stay safe, please stay at home and and as much as you can until you get your shots. I know that we were able to provide five hundred, uh, over five hundred uh input for shots that will take place on this Saturday over in Country Club. We're looking forward to having some additional shots being done right here in the Village of Madison, but until then, please stay safe. And I look forward to talking to each and every one of you, and that we can once again meet in person, so I look forward to that. So, good night, good night to all, and thank you all for being here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Good night.